All right, we will call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Pasco?
Here.
Delahue?
Here.
Justerson?
Here.
Stur?
Here.
Nielsen and Doughton.
Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. One C is acknowledged with the Open Meetings Act poster that is posted by the South Interest. One D, adoption of agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries three to zero.
One E, approval consent agenda items.
To approve the consent agenda.
Need your second consent agenda.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries three to zero.
One F, proclamations, protestations, we have none. Two, redevelopment plan, West redevelopment area. Two A, public hearing, redevelopment plan for an area of the city referred to as the West redevelopment area designated as lighted and substandard and in need of redevelopment pursuant to the Nebraska Community Development Law. We will open the public hearing at 6:02. Is anyone here that would like to speak at the public hearing for the redevelopment plan for the West redevelopment area? Jason, is that you? All right.
Then you can go ahead and close it.
Go ahead and close it at 6:03. All right, let's go to two B, consideration of resolution 2503.
I move to approve consideration of resolution 2503, a resolution of Mayor and City Council of the City of Waverly, Nebraska approving a redevelopment plan for an area of the city approving a redevelopment project and agreeing to the pledge of taxes in a redevelopment area for the payment of indebtedness to be issued by the community redevelopment authority of the City of Waverly, Nebraska and approving related action.
Good job. Great. Do we have a second? I'll move to second. Excellent. Discussion.
This is, can you? Can we get the plot of what we're talking about again? This is the final step of approval. Council would have previously adjusted the light and substandard area and this then would implement a redevelopment plan for that area. This is not a development plan where there's a developer. Sometimes you'll do a TIP project where there's a civic, uh, princess tractor supply building and building in the house. And this is not one of those. This is area-wide TIP where the redevelopment plan includes a number of potential projects. The resolution would be the city finding that these infrastructure improvements against would not happen but for the availability to finance those. The, uh, this would authorize that redevelopment plan, authorize the CRA to notify the county to start splitting the taxes. And then, uh, the base value of this area would be set as of January 1, 2024. Uh, and then the increase in taxes, uh, each year in terms of what the increased value then would, the tax on that would be captured by the county and forwarded to the CRA. Uh, once those funds start coming in, the CRA would issue debt to fund these projects and then use the funds that come in from the tax increment to pay that debt. The, uh, CRA did a cost benefit analysis and, uh, in their recommendation determined that the benefits of the project outweighed the cost in terms of the tax shifts and etc. That's the basics of it. I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Any council members have any questions about anything? We've been talking about it for a while, so.
Once this is approved and the taxes are divided, then, uh, at some point then the CRA would start proposing specific projects which, uh, some may be done just for the CRA, some may come back to the council for approval.
Good, great. Call for a vote, please. Motion carries three to zero. All right, Sheriff's report.
Oh, good afternoon, evening, council mayor. Uh, we had sixty calls for service last month. I anticipate that's going to increase a little bit. This is gorgeous weather coming up. Um, I mean, just as luck would have it, rescue and I were out on an accident on Highway Six. And I know that's been a hot button a little bit with the city on, you know, what's going on with Highway Six and the red lights and at 141st. Um, and I reviewed the last few accidents, you know, as much as we wish to blame the road or the engineering or such or the red light, it's really not. It's driver error. Um, and the last couple ones, a young person thought they could get around a car and they put the bumper to your parking Highway Six. Um, and this one, um, was a young man, very new driver messing with his radio, looking down and just completely rented a big truck and lucky that we didn't have any worse injuries than what we had. So kind of just my position is here, I don't have a lot to say. I'm going to try to leave people some food for thought a little bit, but a little PSA is, you know, we got young drivers out there. Um, although it's a great opportunity, you know, for young drivers. Now we're sixteen and in car brothers and sisters around and such and drivers up to school, but it's probably one of those dangerous things they're going to be doing in their life is getting how to leave a car at fifteen, sixteen years old. Um, and things that we can do as parents, we can't necessarily cloud that dome that becomes my sixteen-year-old and all of a sudden that's the time to know everything. Um, that's a little harder to manage, but what we can manage as parents and guardians is limiting amount of passengers in the vehicles, limiting the distractions, no food in the vehicles certain times of the day. Um, when, when you drive, these are all statistically the most vulnerable times. A young driver with inexperience is going to find themselves in a predicament. So if we can limit those distractions for a while, I mean, pull the fuse out of the radio, I don't care if it might be worth it for a while. Um, so if, that's just something we can do as parents and guardians is help minimize the risk of these youth, um, finding themselves in a predicament where they're distracted so they can actually focus on the task. So that's kind of a tidbit for what's going on right now. We'll still monitor the red light, you know, at Highway Six. I have been, I'm not seeing violations, um, out there as much and, uh, just been going through the parks. And, uh, just TJ's back on day shift. I'm back here in a second to start my third year in Waverly, move it on. And then that, you know, usually you got a brand-new cop in this spot that kind of got, got bid here, so he'll be here for six months and I guarantee he'll drive on, um, to go hit the road and get out and, uh, out of the, the town. But he's a really nice young man. Um, it's up to you to figure out how to pronounce his name. I still don't, probably going for a while. Something similar to Sheshevsky, uh, but a lot more letters in it. He's a good young man, just fresh out of the academy. So he'll, I'll have him come in here and visit Stephanie and staff here and, uh, we meet the mayor. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number four, public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comments? All right, we have five minutes, okay? I'll start the.
I think it would be fifteen seconds, but I think it'd be good.
Oh, that'll work too.
Brandon Cole, 1220048, just wanted to comment about the, the council quarterly meeting last two weeks ago, whatever.
Yep.
When I spoke up and Mr. Justerson said it's not a public meeting, a public comment meeting. I'm okay with that. I, I, sometimes I just, my head gets ahead of me. But I just hope that sometime, you know, every other meeting maybe allow a public comment because I think I hear a lot about, we want public input, we want to hear what you want to do and stuff. And if somebody's here or wants to come and speak, I, I would hope that the council be open to that. Uh, consider that like every other meeting. I know you were like every three months or something like that. Maybe, I know you talked about shorter meetings, but other than that, um, I think that was, uh, just consider that, that's all.
I, thank you for that. We did talk about that. Um, and you know, one of the reasons why we, and I will say this again, one of the reasons why we did not allow public comments during that strategic planning session is because it is only two hours. Um, and we had so much to discuss in that first meeting and we only have four of these a year at this point, right? Because we're just starting them. Uh, we did discuss at some point whether that's once a year or whatever that is, um, having public comments because we do want your input. We do want input and we do value your input, um, and everyone's input. So I do, I do believe at some one of these meetings, we will, um, take input. What that looks like, I can't tell you right now. Um, but yes, I do believe at some point we will.
Possible.
We will take that. So thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? No? All right. Um, six, consideration of claims and financial reports. Six A, claims payment.
I move to approve the consideration for claims and financial payment for the amount of one hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-five cents.
Okay, so that will be. So, yeah, so if you can, we had an update this afternoon because we.
I had, I had you change.
Oh, what I, okay, so in the, I move to approve claims listing amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Slide, call for a vote, please.
Motion carries three to zero.
Six B, treasurer's report and budget and expense report. Does need a vote.
I move to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
I'll second to approve the treasurer's report.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Motion carries three to zero.
We do not have any inter, any resolutions. We'll move on to eight, interaction of ordinances. Eight A, consideration of second reading ordinance 2501.
I move to approve the consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2501 to amend the Waverly zoning regulations or relating to communications tower regulations in the zoning district.
I will need a second, second, I will second that. Discussion.
Uh, did we have any, we had one public comment last meeting, right, on this?
Right.
And nobody here to speak on it today. I would move to, um, suspend uh, second reading and move to third and final reading of the ordinance.
Do we have a second on that?
What it means is that we would just skip ahead, basically. It wouldn't.
Prove it today.
Yeah, it would prove it fully today. It wouldn't come back up, uh, next meeting.
I was not at the last meeting. What was the public comment?
Um, it was, the gist of it was, um, to, that if we do decide to look at approving a tower somewhere, that we would then again have, uh, public input on whether or not we would approve a tower. This is just changing where the zoning can be. Yes, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is the process. If, if, if they came and wanted to build a tower, that would go through a whole new process.
It definitely, yeah, it's a special use permit and it definitely has to go through planning permission, um, definitely to, to do that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so we still need a second on.
Yep, I will second.
Okay. Discussion on that. All right, so let's call for a vote on the.
Motion to suspend the rule.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Okay, so now let's call for a vote on approving third and final.
Motion carries three to zero.
All right, eight B, consideration of second reading ordinance, 2502.
I move to approve, uh, the consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2502 amending chapter fifty-two of the Waverly municipal code, um, running the sewers and the effective date.
I want to send we can move to the third.
Need a second.
Yes, I need a second.
I second that, okay.
So this is effectively just moving, we had a change in the effective date.
It was the, yeah, from, from making found a, an error.
And this is effective, did I read it right? That it's effective in March?
Right, it.
Sorry, sorry.
Yep. Yeah, it's, because the March statement reflects the new sewer rates, the new, um, and we take the average from this November, December, January, December, January, February, and then, and we average those rates and then that's what becomes the new rate on the March bill.
I don't remember there being any public.
So this is aligning policy with practice.
That's a very well good statement. I will move to suspend rules. Move to third and final, thank you.
I second.
Any discussion? All right, let's have a vote on suspending rules. Moving to third and final.
Motion carries three to zero.
Now, let's have a vote on third and final.
Motion carries three to zero.
All right, nine, interaction of business communications. Nine A, presentation, presentation of consideration of twenty-three, twenty-four annual audit as prepared by HBE LLC. Hello.
Can you imagine?
Yeah, she'll present.
Are you, oh, yeah, we have the PowerPoint. Let me just tell you when to go to the next slide.
So I'm Kylie Wickman from HBE. I'm here to present your audit for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. In the audit packet, the first few pages before the actual financial statements are audit report. And in there, we note, um, our opinion is qualified on the government-wide statements because of the basis of accounting, but unmodified on the proprietary fund because that's presented on accrual basis. And this is the same as it's been in prior year. So overall, um, you know, a fine audit opinion. Um, the government-wide statements are presented on the modified cash basis and then we present the proprietary funds, um, the water sewer on accrual where we're actually recording receivables and payables and all that stuff. So you all as the council and management are responsible for the financial statements and then our responsibility is to audit them. And to do that, we do a lot of planning ahead of time. Um, we do a risk assessment so that we can focus our time on what we think are the riskiest areas. And then after planning, um, we send confirmations and come out here and do our fieldwork where we're asking questions, looking at invoices, all that kind of stuff. Um, and then at the end, we can issue this opinion. Um, and then the next slide, uh, there are some reports, um, additional reports at the end of the financial statements too that I'll cover, um, that go over some of our other compliance items. So on the financials, we have a comparison of last year here and this would be your revenue for the governmental funds. Um, total revenue for the year was seven point nine million, which is down a bit from last year. But you can see that main item there, the last line, the debt that was, the bond that was issued in twenty twenty-three and then there were none in twenty twenty-four and sounds like one in twenty twenty-five now. Um, some other changes, the line for charges for services also includes keynote receipts and that revenue was way down in twenty twenty-four. Um, investment income and interest was up from last year just from having more funds in the interest-bearing accounts. And the grants and donations line decreased quite a bit and that was just due to last year, there were several large donations related to the aquatics center. For the revenue on the business-type funds, um, fairly similar to last year. The one difference is this year, uh, we show a transfer in on the water fund of five hundred and six thousand, which was ARPA money that came into the general and then just transferred over to water. And the interest income is up on these accounts as well. As far as expenses, uh, for the government funds, seven point two million in expenses this year, which was down from last year. Um, the first line there on the general government is actually up just because of the new housing program and spending some of the ARPA money on repairs that weren't capitalized. Um, the public safety line item is up a little bit from some fire equipment purchased. Streets also up a little bit because of equipment. Um, the lottery line item, that would be the keynote. So same thing as, you know, the revenue was down and expenses were down as well. And capital outlay last year was pretty high due to the aquatics center. And then the last inner fund transfers out was that transfer from the general to the water for ARPA. And expenses on the business-type activities, um, were one point six million, which is pretty much comparable to the prior year. Nothing really to note there. So overall, um, you can see then there was net income or increase in your net position on both the government and the business-type funds. For the assets on the governmental funds, we only show cash. We don't re, show any, um, capital assets or receivables. And so total cash at the end of the year was ten million, five ninety. For the water and sewer, we do show the capital assets and receivables. So there you can see total assets at twenty-one million, seven hundred thousand, which is up from last year. And then the liabilities just consist of some accounts payable and your debt bonds. So then the net position at year end is ten million, five hundred ninety for the government funds and sixteen million, five hundred for business type. And you can see there the portions that are restricted or unrestricted. Um, so then the reports that I mentioned that are at the back of the financial statements, we do look at your internal controls and then report to you if there's any deficiencies or weaknesses in your controls. Uh, we have a lack of segregation of duties just to the small staff size and that's been the same issue for the last several years. And then also financial statement preparation because, um, us as the auditors are drafting the financials and the notes rather than your staff doing that. So not unusual, um, for a small city. And then this year, since you had federal funds that were spent of over seven hundred and fifty thousand, we also had a single audit, which is just compliance on those federal funds and we had no findings there to note. So that's a good report. And then finally, we also issued a letter, um, that's just a communication with governance to let you know, you know, how the audit went, if there's anything you should be aware of. Really nothing to point out there. Everything went in accordance to our engagement letter terms. Um, you know, everyone was great to work with. We had no issues. We do just give you a little bit of information about how we plan our audit and some of the risks that we identified. Um, our management override of controls and proper revenue recognition and improper journal entries. So we base our testing around those risks and we didn't have any findings related to any of those. And there were no material audit adjustments, um, so that just tells you, you know, like your staff is doing a good job throughout the year of recording things and we're not making a bunch of changes for the audit. That's all I had to present. Are there any questions?
How long have you been doing audit for the city?
Um, well, HBE has been just for a few years. Before that, it was a firm that we merged with and then in between, I think you guys went to another auditor for a little while, so, but I think, I don't know how many years Carmen did it, quite a few.
Long before I ever got here, so I'd say.
Been a long, right?
Probably ten, fifteen years, probably. Yes. So when it, when it was Carmen, it was much more of a smaller group and now we have HB and there's, we work with lots of individuals.
Don't have any questions. I do have a comment, not to you, but to our amazing, uh, city treasurer here. And I'm so glad you're here so we can praise you. Um, you know, I don't know how many, what, what audit is this for you? And here, here specifically.
Five or, well, four, four, but I did two.
Okay. So, and I don't think there's ever been anything that, so I want to thank you. You do an incredible job. We're very lucky to have you. I mean, just to have, you know, major federal programs that we've, you know, that we get money for and have no findings. I think that speaks volumes for the work that you do for us. And again, we are so lucky to have you. Um, thank you for the work you do. Thank you for doing an incredible job.
You're welcome.
This is, this is great.
I just want to say that that's part Stephanie and that's also part Melanie.
Well, I mean, right, but this falls, this falls under the, this falls under the deputy tre, I mean, the city treasurer umbrella.
Yeah.
That's your title. So if, if anything were to happen, that's under your.
No, I know.
So it's, it's a team process.
Yes.
But thank you. You do a great job. We're lucky to have you.
One more.
Thank you. Anything else? Um, so I think we need a motion to accept the audit as prepared.
I move to accept the audit as prepared.
Any discussion? Yeah, let's call for a vote.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, Jer. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, nine B, consideration of G-Works Essentials, Finance Hub. The time you do that, it moves to mistake. UBI Hub and Front Desk Standard Ordering Document.
Uh, I move to approve the consideration of G-Works Essentials, Finance, Finance Hub, UBI Hub and Front Desk Standard Order.
Second.
Um, so comment on this. My, my suggestion on this is that we accept this because we don't have much of a choice. Because this is what we use and we kind of have to. Um, but I suggest that we take the next year to do some research and find something better. Um, that can fit our needs better and that does more integration. Um, we've been with them for, what'd you say, twenty years? Um, they're not, they're not doing us well with customer service. Um, and they're not moving with the times that we need for integration. Uh, we need a lot more stuff and they're just not fulfilling it. Um, so I think that we need to find something better in the next year, but for right now, I mean, we have to use something. So that would be my suggestion.
So are your thoughts like putting out for, request for proposal or?
We, so there are, um, certain vendors that a lot of communities use, so communities our size. Um, and, um, a couple of communities very near to us use a certain, um, vendor that, um, we've discussed in the office and, and I think that it would, might be good for us to definitely consider them. Um, they'll give us, they'll demo for us and everything, so. I, you know, we can obviously give the council a couple of ideas. They'd like to choose or if you want to leave it for us to input. We can definitely share some opinions on that, so. In the future.
Yeah, I think if, if we can find a system that works really well and then we can get some good references on customer service and things like that, that.
And they probably only need one year contracts.
Yes, yeah. Did we, what if we do, I mean, what if it is a six? If we find someone in six months, is there any kind of paraded back?
Yeah.
I didn't think so. Tell them next year.
No, but, um, I think the biggest, I mean, there, there's time to onboard to a new, especially for a completely new vendor. So, um, onboarding just our, our information, but also training and, and getting our team up to speed, so. With that year will be needed.
It's probably, maybe it's fine with you guys, but, um, would it be more about just to try to move, whatever contract move to next, try to get it so that it ends up being at the beginning of a fiscal year and not at the tail end of a fiscal year? Is that causing any issues at all? The fact that we're paying for this near the tail end of our fiscal year?
So, so we've already paid for this year that we're in, right, Sheriff?
So, so we've already paid for this year that we're in, right, Sheriff?
My understanding.
Right. We, we've paid for this year.
So this is starting essentially now moving forward for a year.
This is, what we're doing is locking in the price for our, our next fiscal year. What we're doing.
If during the RFP, we can find a way to ship that right after budget. Because it would be nice to get the estimate of, hey, it's going to cost this for the next year before the budget cycle, like.
Sure.
So that we can put it into the budget cycle and decide.
Yeah.
So that it's in there. Because this was, yeah, from all haywire with it being at the end and kind of forced her hand.
Yeah.
And I don't know, the timing is just, obviously it's kind of screwy. But I wonder if a, if a company would do a 15-month cycle to get us onto a cycle.
Sure.
And that's something we can, we can discuss with the different vendors.
Any other questions, discussion? All right.
Motion carried three to zero.
9D, consideration of revised field rental agreement with Waverly Riptide will reduce rental fees for 2025 season.
I move to approve the revised field rental agreement with Waverly Riptide to reduce rental fees for 2025.
I need a second. I'll second today.
They can die for life.
Any discussion?
The only discussion I would have is as we're looking for a new parks person. So this was a handoff. Like this probably happened in, in the handoff between when I was the liaison and Allison taking over as the liaison. Because I remember talking parks fees for the next year. And one of the discussions that we had during the parks meeting was that there wasn't a whole lot of discussion with these teams ahead of time. It was going to be one of those things where, well, no one's come and said anything. So this is where we're going to, we want to set our rates and we set our rates. And now they're coming back and wanting to talk afterwards. It would be great if there was some discussions ahead of time before the proposal came initially with our parks director and all of the, specifically the baseball folks. Just so even if it's not set by the parks committee and not set by the council, so that they can go and say, this is what we're proposing to the parks committee. And so that if there's an objection, it would be done.
That was requested. It was also requested that they know prior to 1231 because that's when they start planning their previous season and setting up their tournament and getting that out there. So that was, that was noted. Yes.
How, how much, how much lower than what the original cost was?
So the, the regular cost is in the black lettering and the new cost.
So it was favored to count as a waiver-based team?
They were not counted as.
They're not. Okay, sorry. So they, so it's $5 less for.
For the Riptide.
Regular game and then?
And this is where they see the significance.
Is the tournament.
Is the tournament.
Because they are paying $100 per field per day instead of paying on a game basis. Oh, I'm sorry. So on the game fee, regular fee is per hour and they are using the field for about two hours. And so it would have been like $50 for a Riptide game. And so now they're getting their games for $30 a game.
Oh, so that's pretty significant.
It is. Yeah. I'm sorry. So they went to an hourly fee.
Very similar.
Yeah. Because the city of Lincoln, and Allison, you might remember from the, the meeting, that the city of Lincoln charges on an hourly fee basis, an hourly basis versus a per-game basis or for practice basis. And so the Park and Rec Committee voted to go to an hourly basis when they approved the field rental form earlier.
Which would essentially put them, like with the new change, would put them under the cost of a Lincoln field.
Right.
To essentially keep them in waiverly as opposed to going to the Lincoln fields.
Now, I will say, part of the discussions when we originally set the rate was that we were still lower than a lot of places around the area. And we were trying to, that's why the, the waiverly-based teams are lower rate. I feel like it's worth noting that we have a line of Lincoln teams that would come and fill those fields in a heartbeat if teams in our area don't want to fill them and pay them. And they would pay just about anything that we put up there. So we are making a significant decrease in the amount. But we're not doing it because, oh my gosh, we might lose the money on these tournaments. We might lose the money on these games. We'd fill those fields from what I've been told in a heartbeat.
We only, my understanding was the only tournaments that we have scheduled are the two Riptide tournaments. So those are the only tournaments that we're bringing in running on those fields for this upcoming season so far.
But I think the reason behind that is they didn't want to fill the tournaments with outside groups or giving leeway to the groups that typically come.
Right. We, we may have outside teams that come now and request field space.
So for the tournament days, they have the fields for 10 hours. That's when they're paying a third of what.
Yes.
That's four days. So their, their tournament is two weekends. April and May.
Yeah, I think it's the two.
One of the, one of the pitches just.
Yep.
Went, because I was saying a part of it is that Waverly Riptide is a nonprofit. So I just want to throw that out there.
They did also say that they only, like, it's first to Waverly Kids. And any Waverly kid that wants to be on it will be on it if they need more kids in the hole from the outside.
Yes.
So they did also mention that. Their goal is, of course, to fund the teams so then they, doesn't have to come so much out of pocket. On the flip side of that, we also have to fund our needs too on the city side of things. Your Parks and Rec has not been very profitable. And, you know, it does take a lot of work to play on these fields. So that's also.
For the tournaments, wouldn't the cost be paid for essentially by the tournament fees that the other, that the teams that are coming to town to play are, are paying in?
I, well, the goal of the tournament is to make money for the Riptide organization.
So it's, so they, so they do pay the cost to us based on that? But they also use that others, or all of it?
For the country.
Whatever they're doing during the rest of the year, uniform, whatever else they might, field maintenance, all that kind of stuff.
So what they said was, because I don't think any of their coaches, was my understanding.
Correct.
The money that they raised goes to like uniforms, tournament entry fees. Bats and balls, they said.
Umpires.
Oh, yes, umpires. I'm not sure where the rest of it goes.
I think that, I mean, umpires, I think was one of the most significant pieces.
What, what was the recommendation from?
And I will, I will note that this is the first year that it has went back to Parks and Rec. So previously, so anytime with, like building, you know, anytime a developer has a question or anything like that, we send them to Planning Commission. And then they, that can come to council, right? Parks and Rec makes a decision and then comes to, and then it comes to council and then we set these fees. And then if any team has questions or is upset about fees, the school, the legion, anything like that, that comes to Stephanie, it comes to the mayor, you know, and then those discussions are had. This year it's changing because that should be, that should go back through Parks and Rec. They're the ones that are invested. They're the ones that set it. They should be empowered to have that conversation. And so they decided that in red is what they're going to give Waverly Riptide. Waverly Riptide asked that it be for all nonprofits, not just them. And the Parks and Rec Committee said, no, this is for Waverly Riptide and anybody else can come plead their case, just as you did. So this is what they decided just for Waverly Riptide.
So the part I'm getting a little bit hung up on is waiverly-based team tournaments will pay per game basis at $25. So they, in essence, could pay for a 10-hour day $250 for a waiverly-based team. Riptide, which is not a waiverly-based team.
They are a waiverly-based team. So. So they are a waiverly-based team. And so like on the game fee, where I was mistaken and was it, they changed it to an hour per hour. So they would still be a waiverly-based team at $25 per hour. Games typically run over an hour, so they would be charged for two hours. So they would be charged $50 for a game and now they're giving it for $30 a game.
I was thinking waiverly-based team would be one that kids sign up to the city.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. Not a club.
So, so yeah, they did, the select teams are still, if they're enough of their roster, enough percentage of their roster, they can still be considered a waiverly team.
Yeah, I don't like the system at all. And I've already mentioned that. I think this all needs to be hashed out before the original recommendations are made. I don't like the system of later recommendation, now you come individually. And. Because here's the thing, we could say yes to this and someone else, another waiverly team come, and we could say no to that. I'm not saying we would, but we could. And that's not the way I think the system is meant to be. The system is meant to be, we've got the waiverly-based teams at one rate, the non-waiverly teams based at one rate. But I feel like we just need to have that set ahead of time. Now, I, I realize that didn't happen this time, but. I'm not, I'm not super comfortable with making a change after we've already set the rates.
And I'm not super comfortable with naming a particular team or club in the rental form.
And. If we made an amendment, it would be amendment for either the waiverly teams and amendment for the non-waiverly.
Yeah, if you're seeing one, they happen to be the one that came forward. But put it in our document of if you're with this team, you get.
Now, unless, there's nothing to say that we can't keep adjusting this. And Park and Rec's committee could have $25 an hour for waiverly-based teams, $35 an hour for non-waiverly-based teams, and $30 per game for nonprofit teams. I mean, we could always add another line. We've already started delineating types of teams. We could always, we'll get doing something for specifically nonprofit. But again, just the way that this comes about on the backside is, I get it. I just wish the timing would have been completely backwards. Like no one showed up at that meeting.
So they, teams were notified back when the field rental form was approved.
Right.
And which I believe might have been right before the, right before the end of the year.
And, and I know that Parks Committee agenda was out ahead of time because I was prepared for it when I went to that Parks meeting. That's what the discussion was going to be about. And I know that the average citizen might not know what Parks Department meeting's agenda is necessarily about. But if I'm using the parks for a huge amount of dollars every year, I think I would be up on what the agenda on the Parks.
Right.
That's the only limit, it's kind of a hang-up for me that I don't. And they're not here tonight, right?
No, no one's.
So that, that bothers me too. That this is such a big deal, but they missed the Parks meeting and they don't come to the City Council meeting that are deciding this decision. So I can't ask them why. I can't hear their case.
Well, I mean, you could always, you can push it to next time. We can ask him to come and you can have him plead his case. And by him, I mean the president.
Which who, who came and spoke to Park and Rec.
And he made fellow nonprofit select teams.
Should be fine.
And I want to be clear, I'm not necessarily against making a change to the rates. I just don't like how this played out. It just doesn't feel right to me. How it played out. I would make a motion to postpone this until the next council meeting. Also, would this have to go through three readings or is this just?
No.
No, yeah, so I would make a motion to postpone.
Can I have a vote? Motion carried three to zero.
And I know we just put a big load on Parks and Rec because I know that they're already behind on getting everything said and they've said.
They're not.
We're not necessarily behind, but I know that it all comes up real quick. So.
Well.
I am cognizant of that. That makes things a bit harder on the scale, on the calendar scale.
9E, consideration of bid from Lane Christiansen Company for equipment and installation of variable frequency drive on wall number five in an amount not to exceed $24,206.
Move to approve the consideration of bid from Lane Christiansen Company for equipment and installation of variable frequency drive on wall number five in an amount not to exceed $24,206.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll give a vote.
Motion carried three to zero. All right. 10 Committee Reports. 10A, Parks and Rec, Allison. All right. So the teams are set up for the soccer season, which starts in the next couple of weeks. A deadline for baseball signups is April 1st. They are repainting pools and placing dugout benches on Field 1. Shayna is leaving. Her last day is going to be March 19th. Angela at the pool is interviewing for lifeguards for this season. They have 20 hired. 10 more.
They want 10.
They didn't want 10. Okay, thanks. And then the same manager is returning. They have new software to run the summer programs. So tree care is in motion, propose to draft documents on standardizing the tree care in Waverly. As far as like planting, timing, pruning, watering, all that stuff. And that's it. There's been a fund set up for the dog park with Waverly Community Foundation. So if anybody would like to donate, that is available to do so.
10B, Cubber Works, Harry.
They located utility lines for water and sewer for the Danvers Water Main Projects. They're starting pre-work on that. They worked on the shoulders again on North 148th Street and Waverly Road. Last week, they spent a couple of days with the snow removal with the blizzard. Actually lost power to the wastewater treatment plant during that blizzard. And so they ran on the backup generator for, still for 12 hours.
It was scary for a little bit.
Always good to know the generator works. Before you do your generator test.
That's one thing you don't want the generator to not work on?
Kudos to them for having it all ready and set to go and working. The crossing device button was run over on North 141st Street traffic. So it's got a temporary one with a new pedestal base will ride with it. They attempted to do the crack seal on 130th Street, but the kettle had a breakdown and needs some repairs. So some repairs to the kettle and they started. they started flushing the water system, finishing off the areas that they did not get done last year.
Awesome. Thank you. Ten C, public health, David.
They had fifty-one calls for servicing them in February so far. Uh, in March, they're at thirteen months to date. And the members voted on a mission statement uh, in their March business meeting, and that has since been added to the city's website. I agree.
Awesome. Do you, thank you. Um, ten D. Um, do you have anything for Dave?
Yeah. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce elected a new president. Um, Misty Pishna was elected president of the Chamber of Commerce. The secretary is Jill Swim. Um, their treasurer is Bryce Erickson and their membership contact person is Bill Gers. Um, and then um, yesterday our economic development group got together and worked on some of the draft bylaws and articles of incorporation for economic development corporation.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so your report, please.
City administrative report. Um, so Southeast Nebraska Development District is going to be submitting an application for um, middle income workforce housing funds um, for the um, communities in Lancaster County. I've got some information that um for to share with the council so that when you go to make your decision, we'll be making a decision coming out on participation in that. Um, we have approved a special designated liquor license for the school district, um, foundation for education. That event date is April fifth. And um, we have been receiving applications for the park and rec directors and we have park and rec position. We have twenty-six applicants thus far.
Sounds really good.
Absolutely. Um, and then um, also we had an appreciation luncheon for um, city staff last Friday. So that was really nice. Thank you.
I'm, I'm curious. I mean, can't get into it, but I'm curious. Is it from all over the place?
Yes.
Like map wise?
Yes. Very good. Amazing. Put that on. Awesome. Uh, eleven, adjournment.
Do adjourn?
Discussion? Okay, great. I'll give up.
Motion carried three to zero. Or adjourned at six fifty-two.